Good evening, everyone. Sorry if I scared anybody in the back. It's time to start the November meeting, board meeting for the Northern Lebanon School District. We will begin this evening with the opening and flag salute by Director Selm. Eye on. I remembered to push the button.
Hello and welcome. November is a very special month, a month of gratitude and thanksgiving, a month to honor our veterans. I am honored to welcome you to the Northern Lebanon November School Board Meeting. This school board meeting is an especially memorable one because we say goodbye to school board members Matt Arnold, Vice President Dr. McDaniel, President Sue Warner. I personally want to thank each of you for your service and dedication to the district. I'll ask that we give them a round of applause. Nikki Snoblin, a school board director in the Lake Forest School District, wrote a letter in May 2015 at the end of her school board tenure. She said, "It has been a remarkable experience, rewarding in unexpected ways, enriching, frustrating, exhausting, interesting, moving, and exhilarating. I could truthfully apply just about any adjective to it. I'm sure we can all relate, and I want to thank Sue, Dan, and Matt for what they have given to the district." As we say goodbye to these three members, we welcome Nate Erdman, Beth Hackman, and Stacy Murray. Buffalo up new members. As Ms. Snoblin said, "The experience will be remarkable, rewarding, unexpected, enriching, frustrating, exhausting, interesting, moving, and exhilarating, and that's just on the first night." As I am preparing for tonight's meeting, I came across an article entitled "Eight Characteristics of an Effective School Board," as described by the Center for Public Education, which is an initiative of the National School Boards Association. The article highlights effectiveness of school boards, and I'm going to tell you those to you right now. Number one, effective school boards commit to a vision of high expectations for student achievement and quality instruction and define clear goals toward that vision. Number two, effective school boards have strong shared beliefs and values. Number three, they are accountability-driven. Number four, there is a collaborative relationship with staff and the community and a strong communication structure. Number five, effective school boards are data-savvy, and everyone who has seen me on the board knows that I love data. They use it to drive continuous improvement. Number six, they align and sustain resources such as professional development. Number seven, effective school boards lead as a united team. And number eight, effective school boards take part in team development and training. Thank you for listening to those eight traits of effective school boards. I now encourage our past, present, and future school board directors, administration, and the community to reflect on these eight characteristics and consider how these characteristics of effectiveness can be tailored to our needs here at Northern Lebanon. Before I close, I am honored to take a moment to recognize the men and women who have served our country. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, and we honor those who have served our country to fight for our freedom. If you are a veteran, will you please stand to be recognized right now? As a daughter of Marine, I will say that today is the 240th birthday of the Marine Corps Semper Fi, and I also want to thank all the veterans who have served our country. I humbly thank you for your sacrifice and commitment to protect our freedoms. And I wish my dad was here right now. He's at home taking care of my mom, and I wish he was here for me to be able to say that and hear for him to hear that as well. So I want to thank you all. As I move forward with the business at hand this evening, I welcome you to quiet your heart and mind with a moment of silence to remember our servicemen and women and to prepare for the meeting ahead. I now ask that you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in honor and right that we have thanks to our veterans. As you recite the pledge of allegiance, please think about the meaning of the words.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Selm. As you know, I'm a big advocate of reading, research. I believe every board member should be doing that, should not have their head buried in the sand, but should be out exploring, reading. I'm going to go back and talk about IU again, but they always give us titles of some really great books to read. I take it to heart. I took a vacation for the first time in I don't know how many years, and I took one of those books to the beach. If anybody wants to borrow it from me, it had a little sand in, but I did find it very meaningful and would be glad to pass it along to anybody else. Mary, roll call.
Eye on. There's Director Lum will be coming a little bit later, otherwise all present.
And Director Lum has his son being initiated in the Honor Society tonight. That is why he is not here. Our student representative could not be here either because of work. And a couple other housekeeping details. These are not tears of happiness, they are not tears of sorrow. I got dirt in my eye today. I work in a very dirty environment, and this eye you're going to see me, I keep, it weeps. And there's not too much I can do about it. Trust me, I'm not getting worked up up here. Okay, moving on to the announcement of executive sessions. The Management Committee of the Board met in executive session on October 13, 2015. They discussed a contractual item. The Management Committee of the Board met in executive session with the NLEA on October 28, 2015, to discuss contractual items. The Management Committee of the Board met in executive session with the NLEA before and following the November 2, 2015, meetings to discuss contractual items. And hopefully everybody did read their agenda this evening. The Board will be meeting in executive session immediately following this meeting, once again, to discuss contractual items. And thank you very much, Management Committee, because we've been doing a lot of extra work, as you can see, and I appreciate everybody's work on that. Housekeeping's over. Approval of minutes. Everybody should have received the minutes, and I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from October 6, the committee meeting, and October 13, board meeting. Motion on the floor to accept the minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Moving on to the adoption of this evening's agenda. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented this evening. Motion on the floor to accept the agenda as presented, as printed and handed to us. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Okay, thank you, everyone, and let's move on to administrative reports. First up, Mr. Keener, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. For the high school report this month, we want to take the opportunity to look at one of the really neat activities that we have going on at the high school. There's lots of new things, different groups, different clubs have met, and I wish we had the time to share each and every one of them with you. Unfortunately, we don't. So what we did is we looked at one of our newest ones, and I'm especially proud of. This is a great group of kids led by Mrs. Albright. They created something that they call the Northern Lebanon Breakfast Club. I can't do a justice discussing what I think about. What I'm going to ask is for Mrs. Albright and her group to come up here and tell you a little about what they're doing and share some of their things with you. Mrs. Albright?
Albright. Hello, everyone. I'm Mrs. Albright. I am the teacher of the Life Skills Support Class at Northern Lebanon High School, and we created the Northern Lebanon Breakfast Club. I'm going to let the students introduce themselves tonight.
Zachariah, Vice President of the Northern Lebanon Breakfast Club.
I'm Elizabeth Long, and I'm the President of the Breakfast Club.
Say hi, Sammy. Good job, Sammy.
Quite a lot.
And Samantha Randall, job trainer.
I'm Sherry Eisenhower, the aide in the Life Skills classroom.
I'm Elizabeth, treasurer of the Breakfast Club.
Good job, guys. All right, so a little bit of background information about our club. We started the club in March 2015, and it was created by my first-period class. Many other schools in the area, as you'll notice, London Daily News just posted an article about Elco starting something similar. Many schools in the local areas are doing things like this with the special education classes, and basically, our goal is to create realistic vocational skills for the students in our classes. So the participation, every month, the students need the staff participation. Without the staff, we won't be able to have this successful business. And every month, as you can see, students put flyers inside teachers' mealboxes along with their order sheets, and teachers have the opportunity to order bagels, their choice of spread, and their choice of a drink for $5. Our job assignments, Ms. Randall does an excellent job assigning the kids different roles every month, and then they're taught those vocational skills that they're going to need to know. And some of these jobs include the filling of the orders, preparation, delivery, and the janitorial duties. In order to dress the part, we dress for success. So as you can see, these are the uniforms that we would wear every month that we deliver the bagels to the staff that participate. Students are required to wear their Northern Lebanon Breakfast Club t-shirts, jeans, and obviously have a smile on their face when they deliver their breakfast. Compensation, the students are compensated, however, it's not actual money. I have a classroom school store, and I have school store money, so the students earn minimum wage, and Ms. Randall writes checks to the students on a bi-weekly basis based on how they did for their job during that month. And then the students have the opportunity to cash their checks, deposit them, and buy things at the school store. And then the funds, so what do we do with the money that we receive? We use the funds, and it's deposited into our NL Life Skills account, and we use those funds to go out and do community-based instruction, and we do field trips, and anything that's educational and gets the students out in the community and gets them involved. So now it's your turn. We have bagels from the Bagel Rack, which is the business that we get our bagels from, and we would like to present it to the Board and to everyone here that would like to try it at the end of the school board meeting. Thank you.
Mrs. Albright, can't say enough for you. Thank you very, very much. And now this eye is weepy, and it's not because of dirt, but maybe it'll wash it down today. Very much. And students, thank you very much, and what I think you're doing for the teachers, the service you're doing, the learning that you're getting yourselves, can't thank you enough. And Mr. Keener, good idea. I don't know who is responsible for bringing him here and telling us about what you've been doing, but good job. All right. Do you have any other comments that you'd like, or where are we going? Okay, thank you very much. And Dr. McInerney, please.
Good evening. This evening, the elementary presentation is going to be around, we're going to give you an update about what we're doing with ELA and Language Arts. I have two of our reading consultants here, so before they come up and tell you a little bit about what we're doing, I want to tell you a little bit about them. Deborah Stover is an educational consultant with 30 years' experience in public and private schools as a teacher, counselor, and principal. She worked in Michigan, Massachusetts, and most of her experience has been in two school districts in Pennsylvania. For 13 years, Deborah was an elementary administrator at Central Dawfins School District in Harrisburg. She was the recipient of the Fulbright Memorial Fund Program and traveled to Japan with other educators to broaden U.S.-Japanese understanding. Her position as principal at E.H. Phillips Elementary School has been the most rewarding. She was the first principal in the district to implement RTII process with the entire staff. This resulted in Phillips being recognized and consistently awarded Educational Excellence Performance in Pennsylvania. She consults with school district teams on RTII implementation and curriculum improvement. She has presented at national and state-level conferences with a focus on sustaining systems to achieve academic success. We're glad to have her on our team. Our other consultant is Marty Ziegindus. Her educational career has been in speech and language, reading specialist and consultant, reading coordinator, and supervisor of curriculum. She has done district-level professional development on a variety of topics in the area of reading and language arts, including differentiated instruction, special education and reading, and assessments. She has also presented a number of state-level conferences on these topics. She's been responsible for implementing new reading series, Project Read, Learning-Focused Schools, and RTII programs. She has also been responsible for district and local-level data analysis, directing Title I and ESL programs in two districts. She has worked on statewide committees for SAS in the curriculum framework area and has been a trainer in using the SAS website. She is currently an educational consultant who has worked on school improvement projects, curriculum writing, report writing for CAIU, and also does federal programs monitoring for the Pennsylvania Department of Education. So I'm going to have them come up here, and they're going to tell you a little bit about what we're doing with ELA. I have some handouts that I'll let them start while I'm here.
Yes, I'm Mike, yeah, Mike, and Storin. Hi, it's nice to meet you all. I'm Marty, and this is Debbie, and we've worked together since we were both in Central Dawfins, and we seem to be really a good team to be able to get things done and to support each other when we have to come forward and work with the teachers, which we really do enjoy. We've had a really wonderful time with your teachers in this district. I have to say, they're a very hard-working group. What we started on, the focus and the purpose of our work in the Northern Lebanon School District, is first to do a curriculum alignment to the PA Common Core standards. Instructional units are being created with the standards to ensure student achievement and continued student growth. The integration of the Common Core instructional shifts, or the ELA, and I have a separate slide on that, it's the second, it's on the next page, so I'll talk about that a little bit more there. But there are three shifts that are basic to instruction that we are working on with your teachers. The use of the Northern Lebanon aligned curriculum to create standards-based curriculum maps with teams of teachers. You already have an aligned curriculum. You have worked it out into a group of core concepts, and what we've done is we have taken that document, and we've taken it over and worked it into curriculum maps that the teachers would be able to write their lesson plans from. So that's really the core of what we're doing with your teachers. We've been providing staff development and working with teams and individuals to build the capacity to go forward with this work. Your teachers have, we've said, this is a real shift in the way we look at putting together a curriculum, keeping it with the standards base, with the standards as what the units are based on. And so in the past, it's been more focused on the way the units are developed with sources that come to you from, like, well, you have Houghton method, but from all of those sources. And what we've done is we've taken and shifted that so that they are directly related to the standards. The instructional shifts for ELA, and for, that's English Language Arts, and I always forget not to use the jargon terms and all, so just catch me on that when I need to be caught. The first one is building knowledge through content-rich nonfiction and informational texts. And I'm sure that you're all well aware of the 50-50 split that they would like us to do with informational and nonfiction text within both the reading program and across the content areas, of course. The basic reason for this is that this is the information age, and when our students leave school, about 80% of the reading that they are going to be doing is going to be nonfiction, based on their jobs, based on the news, based on whatever websites and internet information that they're looking at. Most of it is going to be informational text, and so the standards do make a shift to that. It's not that we get rid of literature or de-emphasize the joys of reading and understanding and getting the out of literature, but this is a new focus. The second is reading, writing, and speaking grounded in evidence from text, both nonfiction and literary. And I heard this summarized really well, that we want our students to read like detectives and write like investigative reporters. So basically, we want our students to really understand what the text is trying to get across to them and be very analytical in the way that they read. Your district is already doing a work with your reading specialists and in groups of teachers on that close-reading book, and that has many of the aspects that we're talking about in terms of these units as well. The last is regular practice with complex text and its academic vocabulary. One of the things that is now the way we look at a complex text is not just the quantitative scoring of the reading material, which would be its grade level, which is based on sentence length and vocabulary words, words per sentence, that's the way that they do a quantitative analysis. But there's also now a qualitative analysis that goes along with that. And that qualitative analysis looks at things like the vocabulary, the levels of meaning that are within the text, the clarity of the language that's presented to the students, and also the structure of the grammar, not just how long the sentence is. So all of those things are taken into consideration. And then the third aspect of that is the reader and the task. We look at, you know, how much background information will the student need for each particular piece of text that they're getting, and what kind of motivation can we provide for them, and hopefully be very engaging when we provide that motivation. But those are the basic instructional shifts. And then we started with our planning, and Deb is going to talk to you about that.
Okay, I'll just, if you look at your planning slide that's on the sheet, I'll just highlight that for you briefly to tell you what we've done. The planning with your teachers began in August, when we met with all of the K5-grade level teams. Your teachers were already using the standards because they were released in mid-2014, as you want now. So last year, they had the opportunity to begin using them and integrating them with their teaching. But now they're ready to work on the curriculum together and create more meaning and using a variety of resources. So that is why the planning is very important. When you look at the planning slide, it refers to the questions that we went over and discussed with the teachers. They discussed them, they answered those questions, and so in essence, the process officially began. The focus is on, obviously, continuous quality improvement and a consistent implementation so that your students will have an increased student learning, and we're very proud of how well your teachers did in the planning aspect. Looking at the next slide, the key concepts and shifts for instruction, Marty touched on those, and I won't go into reading them, you can read those for yourself, but she talked about the information and literature balance and the fact that the content is also, I know it's a challenge for elementary teachers to always fit in, all of the content with social studies and science, but that type of text and those articles are also, of course, considered very important and are delved into in this framework. The other thing is that because of the text complexity and the fact that you're looking at text-based answers, the close reading of the text requires the students to learn how to re-read and go back to the text and extract the answers from the text, and that is something that the kids really learn to do and do very well, and that's essential. And also then, the writing from the sources, when they are able to read the text, understand it, discuss it, and then write a response based on what they read, they're taking their answers from the text. The academic vocabulary, I'm sure you've heard that term as a word before, but there is an emphasis on this nationwide, and you know those are the terms that transcend any all subjects. So a word like analyze, a word like describe, these are words that kids really have to be able to not only use, but truly understand. So there is a big emphasis on the academic vocabulary. And with all this in mind, this will lead our, your students to be prepared for career and college, and that's ultimately the nature of it. Looking at the next slide about rigor, I know this is a word that's bandied around a lot, and I'm sure, again, this is a word that as a school board you've heard about, and there are misconceptions about this, because rigor doesn't mean that we load more homework on kids, it doesn't mean that we're giving them things that are hard for them to do, because that is not the purpose of rigor. So you don't want to give students work they can't handle. So true rigor, if you look at the list of what rigor is, it must be taught by the teachers and scaffolded so that the children are taught how to handle whatever the task is. Also, there's a misconception that not all kids can handle rigor, and that's not true. You can have children in kindergarten that can handle a rigorous task, but the teacher has to address the steps on how to do that, and that's the important thing. So rigor is fundamental to learning, and for all of us, we start with something that we have a vague familiarity with it. Someone will mention something to us about a concept, and we're not really sure what it means, but as we understand what it is, we come to a true understanding, and that's what the teachers are doing. They're developing critical thinking, and I know that you already know that, but the way the teachers are organizing these units and using rigor will really benefit our students, and we're very proud of the work that they've done already. So Marty, if you want to wrap up?
Who brought you an example in the handout of what we were talking about, about rigor and about the way that the standards are trying to increase what were the demands that we're making on our students without increasing the anxiety of the students? So if you take a look at the way things have shifted, we used to all know Bloom's Text On, well, Bloom's Text On was revised, and now the standards were based much more on this web's depth of knowledge, which basically took Bloom's and added, what is the cognitive load, what is it that students have to do if they were going to apply Bloom's Text On? And so we took an example from a slide that was actually presented at one of your meetings here in the district, when they were talking about this at one of their faculty meetings, because I thought it was a very good example of the differences in the way that you can apply depth of knowledge and rigor. And actually, the four levels of depth of knowledge are recall and reproduction, using skills and concepts, using strategic thinking, doing strategic thinking, and then extended thinking, which is broadening perspectives and usually involves self-evaluation and teamwork, et cetera. So the first three are there, and the word they took was describe, and of course, you can see as you read it, that the very first one just says, describe the characteristics, which is simple recall, then it asks the students to do, to display their understanding of the skills and concepts. here in the district, when they were talking about this at one of their faculty meetings, because I thought it was a very good example of the differences in the way that you can apply depth of knowledge and rigor. And actually, the four levels of depth of knowledge are recall and reproduction, using skills and concepts, using strategic thinking, doing strategic thinking, and then extended thinking, which is broadening perspectives and usually involves self-evaluation and teamwork, et cetera. So the first three are there, and the word they took was describe, and of course, you can see as you read it, that the very first one just says, describe the characteristics, which is simple recall, then it asks the students to do, to display their understanding of the skills and concepts, and then in the last one, they actually have to create a model so they have to do, they have to apply it. And that is really where the standards are going, the application of the skills and the comprehension that we're working on with our students. So what we've been doing, crossing our bridge to a standards-based curriculum map, is we worked with your reading specialists over the summer, and we discussed with them the topics that would be then worked into units. We decided on a set of those topics with those, with the reading specialists, and then we started to work with grade level teams, starting with your August 24th in-service. We reviewed the standards and the eligible content with them, they really had already an understanding of it. They weren't, when we asked them how comfortable they were with using it to write, they didn't claim that they had great comfort with it, but God bless them, they just went ahead and worked with it and became more comfortable with it. This isn't a process that has been without angst, but it is a process that is going forward, and we're really pleased with the way the teachers have gotten enthused about, you know, what this is going to look like when they actually go into the classroom and instruct with it. So they've integrated multiple resources, they base their units on core concepts, and as I said, you know, rather than saying like good neighbors, like a unit in Houghton Mifflin, you get literary analysis as the focus of your unit, and everything that you do with anything is based into literary analysis. We have worked on developing a pilot unit with the teachers, that was what we did on August 24th, we started with poetry unit. We've met with the teachers since that time, we met with each grade level team, to go over the units that they created and to strengthen them and to help them try to finish them up. And they're almost all completed at this point, there's only one that we haven't seen finally revisioned. We've sent them a set of final notes on what they have provided for us, and they have really found some remarkably good resources, they've been very innovative in the way that they have looked at things, and we've just been very impressed. And you have some people here who know technology and who know their resources way, way better than we do, who have not been directly dealing with those kinds of resources. So we've developed a year-long plan, which will address foundational skills, informational effects, literature, writing, speaking, listening. Each grade level was given a set of the topics that we will be creating units for, and on November 13th, we will be working with them to create a second unit, but which will actually be the first unit that they would work with next year. This poetry unit pilot will run from January 9th, roughly, from January 19th, it depends on how the teachers finish their other work, for about 20 days, and we're going to take feedback from that and use it to help us with the rest of the units. Because basically, what we'll be looking at, which is the final piece of this, is the student work that comes out of these changes. And we know, implementation is always a little iffy here and there with classes, so, you know, we're ready to work with this and make sure that we can make it as smooth as possible for your teachers and for your students. Are there any questions?
We often hear from various people that are particularly really not aligned with the state core. You've gotten to dive deeper than any of us as board members have. What would your feedback be if somebody could say that to you?
The way that you've created your curriculum, you know, the way that it looks online, taking those core concepts, those core concepts address each one of the standards. When you go into a grade level curriculum and you look at that core, the core concept at the top, and then, within that core concept, each one of the content, there's their set of columns, and the first column is the content, and that content is, in almost all cases, the direct quote of the standard, and the standard is given below it. Then you go off and you, and you have like your resources, you have what the student expectations will be and what the assessments will be. To say that I've read every line of it very, very closely would not be telling you the truth, but I have looked at it so that we could use it in the units that we were developing, so I've looked at some of the literature things. Those all seem aligned to me, and in addition to that, your teachers took and added some skills within that, within a column of what the student expectations were, that actually were beyond what were in the actual standard statements. So I can't answer whether it's perfectly aligned at the grade level, but the things that I looked at, even though I would say that the way that we're creating the curriculum maps will provide an easier, a more user-friendly way of doing it, because what you did was you kind of, if you have a core concept, you did all the standards for that core concept there. In a curriculum map that really takes yours and puts it over into a more user-friendly, we're taking standards from several of those core concepts to be taught within the unit, which is the way it actually is taught, and it's the way that your teachers have been going into those, to that core curriculum. Because I know when they write their lesson plans, they have to put which standards from the curriculum they're addressing. So they are going in now and doing this work, but this curriculum map will have that work done for them already, so that when they are actually teaching and writing their lesson plans from the curriculum map, they can see right there, look, what standards they would address, rather than having to go between the different core concepts. That would be what I'd say was the main difference that I saw.
What would you say would be maybe the answer to this? What's our biggest weakness, and how should we, how should we go about fixing that?
Oh, I think your weakness is the same weakness that is across the board, and that is, let me say Deb, getting really familiar with the standards and with what their, you know, their request of student achievement is, and keeping that kind of balance, because there's this huge focus on text to text and really making the kids do this close reading, and you want to do that without destroying the love of reading entirely, so would you say, Deb?
Yeah, I think Northern Lebanon is similar really to other districts across the United States. You know, some states have adopted the Common Core, they're just called the Common Core. Pennsylvania, as you know, reworked that slightly, and they call them the Pennsylvania Common Core standards. So Pennsylvanians are just, you know, slightly different. But when you look at the document, and Margie and I look at it a lot, but when you look at it, and you know, teachers look at it, they're certainly aware of what the standards are and what they have to teach the kids. But it is overwhelming, and it can be mind-boggling. But really, by doing the process that we're, that we're having them do, they're integrating them into these units, they're going to be really on top of things next year when next school year starts, because they'll have units to use throughout the year that will be totally based on the standards. And, you know, the question becomes resources. So one resource does not equal a curriculum, like one textbook, you know, is not a curriculum. I mean, look, look how our lives have all changed because of what's available on the web, and I'm sure, I mean, high school teacher, a great biology teacher I know in another district has a great textbook perhaps, but is constantly going out and bringing in other resources and video clips and all kinds of exciting things, you know, to enrich the course. So your teachers are doing that very same thing. I can tell you, I don't want to go into this too much, but for example, kindergarten came up with this awesome idea to teach the kindergarten kids, one of their central questions is what makes poems great. Another grade level is going to be writing poetry, and bring the parents in, and they're going to read the poetry to their parents. Fourth grade came up with a great idea to do a poet study, and, you know, they're, so they're still using their Houghton Mifflin text for the base, some basic poetry, but they came up with all kinds of other resources and ideas to enrich what they're going to be doing. So actually, we chose poetry, Dr. McInerney and Margie and I chose poetry. And it's actually been a, it's a challenge, because teachers aren't used to teaching for a month, using poetry, you know, as their base. So this was a challenge, but it's very exciting to see what they're going to start doing when I teach this. And then I'll use the same unit again next year, but then I'll add others to it, so they'll have a year of these.
How long will those days take, two a year? How many years?
Well, Dr. McInerney, we're doing, what, six? We have a good plan, six units, and we're doing, we did one, we're doing one on Friday with them, there's going to be one in January.
In January? Do you want to address that for us? Or do you want us to? And in April. So we have days that are planned, I don't know that we'll get them all done during school year, we'll do our best, and then we may have to have some teachers come in.
So like a year, a year or two till we get the?
I'm hoping a year till we get the, so that we can use them next year. And then, you know, as we go, we'll tweak them and make them better.
They should be living documents. I mean, the reason you do a curriculum map like this, and you have it there so that the teachers can continually tweak it as they use it, and they see, you know, you think you've covered everything, you think you've got everything nailed, when you write these things and you work as a team and everything like that, but inevitably, when you go in and you start using it, you find things that you need to improve. And so we want it to be a living document that they can just constantly improve.
So our vigorous professional development is going to pay huge dividends for us.
We certainly hope so. We think, I mean, actually, I'm already seeing dividends in what your teachers are saying about us.
I'm excited, yeah, we're very impressed with what we've seen. I mean, you know, we've given them a lot of, we're not writing it for them, but they're doing the writing, but we're guiding them. And, but we do, we read everything, we get feedback, we go, we add readings to them, because, but they're really wonderful.
It's amazing, I mean, one of your, one of your second grade teachers uses QR codes to give the students individual access. I mean, I'm like, really? I mean, do you know, I mean, do you know how comfortable I am with QR codes? Not at all. But I thought, I mean, you know, it's amazing to see what they bring to the table, it's just exciting.
As comfortable as I am with poetry.
Well, you just wait. You just wait. You're going to have poetry written by the kids of Northern Lebanon Athletic Club. I can promise you that.
We think so, we think so. And in your packet, there are samples of what these units look like, too.
Thanks.
So that you can see what it actually, you know, sample page that we've got.
There's a lot of your, what you're looking at, I think she gave you a first grade sample and a third grade sample, just the front page. But we get them started by giving them the standards and starting with the content, but they, they come up with the ideas.
Anything else?
Before you leave, I just wanted, Amy, did you mean that you were vigorously and rigorously and copiously taking notes?
Well, I, I, Margie and I go back, so I definitely, I'm just so pleased to have you both here, and I'm excited to see, but I think we're in great hands here, so I'm just writing that down because I was just.
Because you want to steal the ideas for Little Dolphin, I got it.
But I just, no, I'm so thankful for what you are doing.
It's a great process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deborah and Margie, thank you very much for that presentation. And I believe we have one more yet? There you go, I'm sorry, Mr. Yavich?
The Northern Lebanon Athletic Program, specifically the tennis program this year, actually had an international flair to it this year. We had the opportunity and the privilege to have an international student participate on our teams, Maya Anderson, student from, pardon, from Denmark. And she's going to come and tell you a little bit about herself and some of her accomplishments while she's been here in Northern Lebanon.
My name is Maya, and I'm an exchange student from Denmark. I'm 16 years old, and I started at Northern Lebanon this August. I started two weeks before school started with tennis, with the preseason. I don't know what's this. I'm not used to speaking in the microphone. And it was a good opportunity to learn people, because I was all new here, so I didn't know anyone. So I could get to know people from the tennis team, and then when school started, they could introduce me to their friends, and then I got to know a lot of people. Tennis here is kind of different from Denmark, because here it's like at the school, while in Denmark it's like more individual, you like play at a club. So it's been fun to play for school, and it's, yeah, it's just been a lot of fun. There was nothing else? Oh, yeah. About that. I was kind of confused when I came here, because I didn't really know what was going on with tennis, so I just took it one day at a time. So I play the different matches, and then I just won. And then I was introduced to counties, and I was like, oh, there's this, and then I won, and then I went to leagues, and I won, and then I went to districts, and people were like, oh Maya, this is kind of big, and I was like, oh, it is. And then I came second, and I got the chance to go to states, and it was just this weekend, and I got third, so that's. So I was quite happy. I didn't, when I came here, I didn't expect anything, because I had no idea what it was going to be like. And tennis was kind of the only thing I had, that felt like home here, because everything else was, else was so new, so it was a good thing I had tennis. Any questions?
Do you have any younger sisters that can?
I have a little sister, but she just started last year with tennis, and I started when I was eight.
I wanted to, to just give you an idea how good she is, she qualified for states, and the week before states, she went away on a trip with her host family to tennis. Didn't play tennis for, what, a week and a half?
I think it was like two weeks.
Yeah, for two weeks, came back on Friday, and went to the state tournament, won two matches that day, and won the next day, so yeah, she's, she did a good job, and very liked it.
Thank you, Maya. I bet you didn't know that when you filled out the application to come on over here public speaking. I have heard nothing but good things about your presence in the high school, whether it's your attitude, whether it's your spirit, whether it's your, your hard work, heard lots of good things about you, and honestly, it's very true, and thank you for coming and sharing your talents here at Northern Lebanon. Anything else from the administration? Amy, now we're going to move in on then to our special presentations, and these are just verbal presentations, the students that we will be talking or that will be reading their names will be honored at the end of the school year, so this is just a verbal announcement. The High School Students of the Month for November are Owen Stoger and Ethan Beard. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and the Genes Town Lions Clubs, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Lions Club.